Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, sorry to keep you guys waiting. We just had other things we had to attend to in the other room, so our apologies for keeping-
Secret stuff.
Our apologies for keeping everybody waiting now, so. The pledge allegiance. Okay, the first order of official business after the pledge allegiance is public comments. Do we have public comments this evening from anybody? All right, no public comments. The next order of business is acceptance of our minutes, the May 16th minutes, June 6th, May 16th minutes. And the motion is move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of May 16th, 2017, as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor of accepting those minutes? Thank you all. Okay. Next order of business is the correspondence, correspondence items. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have correspondence items A through E. And a motion is to accept the correspondence items A through E. Do we have a second? Thank you, Tim. Any conversation or discussion about the A through E correspondence items tonight? Kevin, the one, the one question is the denial for the roof at Green Meadow?
Yeah.
Where does that put us? Are we, are we gonna end up having to go to a-
So it still remains a capital-
Free cash or a capital expenditure?
... request and it's still a need unfortunately.
I got-
The SBA didn't approve the grant request.
Right, so I guess the-
It was at age.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, is that something that we should anticipate being an emergency expense or that go through the regular process?
Uh, we should anticipate it going through the regular process. It's on the capital plan for sooner rather than later, but it is a big, a big cost.
All right, so it's not-
So, right now, I mean, it's not imminent.
It's not an imminent collapse?
Correct.
All right.
They've plugged a few spot areas that need it and will continue to do that, but-
Okay, and the other one I had-
It's on the horizon.
All right, and the other one I had to do, a question about was the, um, the public meeting. It's gonna be in two towns, but no public meeting in Maynard?
What's the, uh-
Um, Everstons.
Yeah, Enstar?
Yeah.
Is that typical that we wouldn't have a meeting in town?
Yeah, they've, they've held some here, um, for the, you know, for the area, but this, this particular one that impacts multiple communities, they'll choose one or two to hold at the public area.
Okay. All right, thanks. So does anybody else have any questions about those five items for Kevin? Anybody else? No questions? All those in favor? Thank you. The five? Becky?
Yes, five.
Thanks. I couldn't see.
Who's late?
All right, thank you. All right, so now we're onto the consent agenda. Again, we have A through D on the consent agenda. And make a motion to accept the consent agenda, consent agenda items A through E, A through D as printed. Do a second.
Second.
Thanks, Tim. So does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Nobody wants to ask any questions about these parades, parks, music? Do we have, do we have, Kevin, for the, the parade is the fifth opening day costume parade for the, that is ever a, so do we have, do they have police for that in detail?
That's-
Or it's all on the sidewalk?
There is a, um, a police escort.
Yeah, but that's the one that they, they typically will, they'll start at the-
They just go down-
-street law. They stay on the sidewalk and go down. There hasn't been a, like a formal, um, because-
It wasn't clear from her, from the permit that it was a sidewalk march, but when you read the letter from-
It definitely is, yeah.
It definitely is.
Yeah.
I don't know how the police are gonna escort them up the wrong way street, but, okay. They have lights.
No, they stay, there hasn't been any issue.
Hopefully Mike Noble will be working out there. It'll be interesting anyways.
They do it as a, uh-
Kids will call it out on the radio, "You're going the wrong way!"
They do it as the official kickoff.
All right, so anybody, any questions on the consent items? No questions? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Onto number six, Erickson's dairy proclamation.
No.
Not, not here?
They're not here. There's family issues going on. They're tending to some family members.
All right, so we'll just put that on the next meeting?
No, you can do it.
You can do it, but there's no one here to explain. I mean, it's self-explanatory, right?
It pretty much is.
Is everybody aware of what it is?
And everyone's invited in town.
Okay.
Eighty year in-business celebration.
So we're just, there's just a proclamation in the-
Proclamation.
In their own celebration on their own property?
Correct.
Okay, so we're just basically voting to have a proclamation?
Yes, and one of you hopefully-
Since they're not here, we agreed they'll give us a free cup of ice cream out there. I'm joking.
Yeah. The movie guy brought his popcorn, didn't he?
Their history may be pushing close to fifty.
All right, right, um, so I move to accept and approve the proclamation for Erickson's eighty years in-business celebration on July 16th, 2017. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right.
So, Mr. Chair, item seven is a request from Serendipity Cafe for requests for outdoor seating. Came to the intention of the outdoor seating that had already been out there and the Hobstons have officially formally requested to follow the process, requested permission to utilize the sidewalk space and have provided a fairly detailed letter as to the request and the rationale behind the seating that was chosen and where they're at. So we're just, we're trying to, they're trying to do the right thing and come in and get official formal approval for that use and, you know, appreciate you guys following through with that.
All right, so I'll read it and then we'll get into it. Move to approve request for outdoor seating at Serendipity Cafe through November 1st, 2017. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Terrence? Okay, the discussion? Okay, so we need, we have outdoor seats. We need to discuss. You wanna tell us about the outdoor seating? I mean, I saw that, I think we read the letter, but for everyone else who hasn't, just, well, just a quick recap of what we're talking about, so everyone's aware.
So we replaced six light metal tables and chairs that were, that have been there since they were there, that in our community in our district there, with four picnic tables that are much heavier. We felt that it took away some of the problems we had had with the previous seating, such as people tying their pets to them against our advice, as well as banging the chairs into the windows, things that we felt were safety concerns. We would also, from time to time, have problems with them being relocated on the sidewalk, so we would have to go and rearrange them and make people unhappy sometimes, but because they weren't meeting ADA guidelines when people would rearrange them on the sidewalk. So we felt that when we went with the picnic tables, they're in a, a place where they can't be moved, so they're more secure, more stable. They're 185 pounds each, so we were hoping that it took away some of those concerns. The number of seats is roughly the same between 16 and 24, which is what the other tables had provided.
Okay. They do meet ADA guidelines. There's more than four feet access, and they're actually eight inches less than the previous tables. They actually take up less room.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
So I'm clear, was the, was the issue that because the previous tables were there, were those previous tables within the rules, and then when they were changed, now we're outside the rules?
So, it, just to be clear, it should be an annual request-
Okay.
-for the approval. It's not a blanket approval straight across annually. Anybody looking to, for this, you know, typically it's seasonal, and that's something that we as a board need to firm up our policies a little bit better as to the application for that, so there is some work to do there. But yeah, annually, typically we've had several that have come forward, you know, several, I'd say three or so, that have, have taken part in that. The former halfway location did for a number of times, but they have a, they're in a little different scenario where the sidewalk is significantly narrow, so to get that four-foot clearance is virtually, doesn't really make it feasible to even put table seating on there. Willys Phillies in the past has come forward for requests. None of those have in the last couple of years, so I think, you know, you guys have, have continued down that, the road of keeping them out there, and it just hasn't been anything that's been on the radar. But yeah, typically annually, and they're well aware of that now, and that's why they're before the board today, but it should be a, an annual request for, you know, outdoors, for the outdoor seating on the sidewalks.
In the meantime, the seats can stay until we iron this out, or what do we-
Yeah, I think, I mean, we'd be seeking far as the board's approval to approve the seating now through, you know, through this season. They would stay in place, and then we've talked about it as far as some issues on our end to kind of solidify a policy application process, which Town Council's already drafted, which is a matter of the board's kind of review and adoption. But my recommendation would be that we, the board approve the continued use. As I said, the accessibility for the sidewalk isn't impaired, and it meets the intent of what we have in the past given allowances for, so.
So, they stay out overnight?
They do. They do stay out overnight. And a lot of people do use them. We noticed that overnight, I mean, not overnight, but like when a lot of the older people that walk downtown, they like to have a seat to sit at. And Chong next door actually said that it's great for her. She comes out and she sits and she relaxes for a couple of minutes, so. But yeah, they do stay out overnight. They're, like I said, they're 185 pounds. It'd be hard to bring them in every night. But the old seats, the old seats stayed out there. No one, yeah. No one ever really messed with the old seats, which I was surprised at, but three years, no one ever really messed with them, so.
If you walk into the end of a little chair or table, it's not gonna hurt so much. Is there any danger of anybody walking into the end of the picnic table? Is it lit? How lit, how well is it? The corner?
Um, I mean, I rounded off, I rounded off all the corners on the tables when I sanded them.
Yeah, but I-
So.
We're under, we should be under a street lighter too.
I'm just asking about the lighting, you know, so I'm guessing you have two on one side of the door and two on the other?
Yeah, and there's streetlights on both sides.
All right, I'm just, you know.
And they're bright colored tables.
Yeah, and we painted them pretty brightly, so.
All right, anybody have any questions for John and Laura? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So Becky will have, uh, do we need a, is there a permit? We haven't have a permit.
No, we just issued authorization, yeah.
So, next year we'll have a permit.
We'll have a permit.
All right.
We'll come back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number eight. Used car dealer's license.
Car block.
Okay, Kevin?
So, it's a request for a class two motor vehicle application for a used car dealer. Mr. Rhodes, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for joining us. Has a, essentially primarily an online operation. I'll allow you to explain. Car Block LLC, that's being run at the Mill and Main Compets as an office, and he's seeking a license to continue to provide that online automotive marketplace.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening. My name's Cameron Rhodes. I'm a Maynard resident and founder of Car Block LLC or CarBlock.com. Car Block's a startup company, looking to try and make private party transactions a little bit easier and helping buyers and sellers transact their vehicles in a more effective manner. The firm's essentially a peer-to-peer marketplace that offers transaction services on top of that, things such as financing, other controls to just make the process more systematic. The reason I'm here today is to apply for a class two licensure. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 57 dictates that firms who engage in transacting any, you know, after, or used vehicles require a class two license, and this is Car Block's principal business. I think a few important distinctions between the business that I'm running and a traditional dealership is the lack of a showroom and onsite inventory, which leads me to the premises that the business is located on. We have offices at Mill and Main, and then I'm applying for the license through my home at 187 Great Road, Maynard. You know, in a past conversation with the building commissioner, my understanding is to do a home, home occupation as a right, there just can't be any signage and no vehicles obviously held for sale on the premises. I'll uphold those two conditions, and I've submitted the completed application, the surety bond and the required amount, and a description of the premises, so. Thank you.
The motion, the motion is move to accept and approve the license for a class two dealer of secondhand motor vehicles to Car Block LLC located at 187 Great Road, Maynard, Mass. Any second? Thank you, David. So does anyone have any questions?
Sure. So quickly, so I'm clear. You're just setting up a home office, your business do. You're not gonna be doing, there's no cars that are gonna be sold that are gonna be on the property. There's no signage that we just talked about. It's simply a transaction where that's an office for your company, or that's the headquarters of your company going forward?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I wanna buy a car from Terrence?
Come on down to Car Block. CarBlock.com, and you can submit the information and-
So we're, I guess the question is, where do you, you know, where do you go to see the vehicle or inspect the vehicle?
It's conducted between the two private parties. Car Block is, would hopefully be a licensed dealer and would ultimately transact it. We'd acquire the vehicle and sell the vehicle, just like any other dealer. We would just happen to do so closer to the transaction, closer to the point of sale, so there's no loss of time sitting on a dealer's lot, and the value proposition there is that there's less frictional costs associated with the transaction.
Just curious, you know, is there another existing entity that would be like a competitor that we can-
That's a good question. There's a few. There's one, Tred.com. They operate out of Portland and Washington State, so out west. BP was another one that has just shuttered. One that's somewhat similar is Carvana, which recently started an advertising campaign in the Northeast. So those are a few. It's just a, you know, different, everybody's trying to make a better mousetrap, I suppose.
So it's a little bit of a niche for certainly the Northeast?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if I was interested in selling my vehicle and Chris wanted to buy it, we transact through you. Vehicle would stay on my property until such time as it's sold, and then-
It would go to Chris then.
And then you would facilitate that moving it? Okay.
Yep, and then-
No other third place that the car or the automobiles are actually gonna?
No, just A to B.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, quickly, I apologize if I missed this.
Sure.
I'm looking, you have, you have a business address at Mill and Main?
That's right.
And you're looking to, you're looking to have this on 187 Great Road?
Correct. So the space at Mill and Main, that's a coworking space, which is basically like a big shared office space. It's kind of like office space on demand, which is helpful for startups, and you can kind of use it as you need. So any external meetings between a business partner or, or something of that nature would be conducted there, whereas the license and the surety bond, et cetera, are through 187 Great Road.
All right, I think you may answer the question though. If you've got a-
Why, there's two addresses.
Why would you use it through a home?
Exactly.
Is that in the Rev Factory space, or is it a different cowork space?
Uh, it's in, yeah, it is the Rev Factor space.
It is, okay.
All right, anyone else? Any good, any questions?
Website's up right now?
Under construction, but up technically, so.
Okay.
More to follow, hopefully in the next month or so.
All right, so, any other questions, Tim?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor of CarBlock.com? There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'll have your license a bit over tomorrow.
Great, thank you, Becky.
Okay, gentlemen?
Nine and ten sort of morph into each other, and I don't really know what's going on here, so.
Hopefully we do.
You want the-
Nine and ten?
Somewhat. Different locations, different dates, but-
Did she take the rest?
Same faces.
I was panicking for a second. I was looking for like a union contractor.
Same faces. How are you guys?
All right, so. What do we mean, one, one of these or both of these?
So I think for-
Are there two different, are there two different carnivals?
Two different events, two, yeah. So I think for purpose of approval, we take them as agenda items, which is gonna be the same folks speaking to it. So the first one on the agenda is the special permit request for the five-day carnival at Fowler School for June 30th through July 2nd event, so.
Need to read this motion?
Yeah, unless you want to-
I'll do that first. I move to accept and approve the Fiesta Shows Carnival special permit for five days at the Fowler School parking lot on June 30th and July 3rd, from 6:00 PM to 10:30 PM in July 1st, 2nd, and 4th, from 2:00 PM to 10:30 PM, and on July 2nd with fireworks. The conditions as herein stated, Fiesta Shows will provide Town of Maynard with proper certificate of liability insurance, namely the Town of Maynard as additional insured. Fiesta Shows will schedule Mass Department of Public Safety to inspect all rides prior to opening. Fiesta Shows will be responsible for daily and final cleanup. Fiesta Shows will obtain temporary food permits from Board of Health, an electrical permit, full police details, dumpsters, and portable toilets must be made available. Fireworks displayed on Sunday, July 2nd must be approved with Fire Chief Stowers. And I have a sec, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I guess now we're going to the discussion portion.
We did this last year, didn't we?
No.
Was there, wasn't there a carnival at the Fowler School last year, though?
At school?
Did they have something?
I thought there was a-
They do a Fowler Fair.
A Fowler Fair.
Yeah, it's much, so this is completely new.
Water bottle.
All right, so. What is it, what is it? What do we wanna do? What do you guys wanna do?
Well, why don't we ask these guys?
That's what I just asked them.
So basically, Chris and I-
No, I asked, I asked these guys. What are we, what are we looking for?
So, I'm the president of the Relief, uh, Firefighters Relief Association, and we look for ways to raise money. I've done golf tournaments, I've done a bunch of stuff. What we do with the Relief Association, it's not like the union. What I do is I buy grave markers, flags. If this ex-call, full-time member in distress or family member, you know, flowers, someone passes away, that's basically what we do. It's more of that. So, like I said, I've done other, I've done golf tournaments, like I said, we've done fireman's ball and all that. So Chris and I, the past couple of years, have been talking about this idea. I remember the last time the carnival was in Maynard because I was actually in Green Meadow, and it was pretty bad watching them set up a carnival where you're trying to be a second grader. That's how long it's been. So, we reached out and we looked at a couple of, and talked with a couple different owners of carnivals first and tried to get a feel for what we thought would be a better mix for us and the town of Maynard especially. Chris, you in the app? I know I have a, I have the-
So as you guys are aware, with the Police Relief Association, most of our money goes right back into the community. Boys and Girls Club, Relay for Life, any of the organizations needing families in town. Our, Chris, we collect presents for the needy in town. So as Sean was saying, we will look for something new to bring in some more revenue, as opposed to just hitting up the residents constantly with letters requesting for just straight money or golf tournaments. And I actually found Fiesta Shows from the, being at the Marshfield Fair. They do lots of the larger fairs, Marshfield, Todd Field. We reached out. We have Gene Dean with us tonight. He's the president of Fiesta Shows. We met with him regarding the second carnival, and he's informed us that he had a town back out of their Fourth of July carnival, and asked us if we'd be interested. And we talked a little bit, and we felt like it made sense for the associations to jump on board for this financially. And my lifetime of being in Maynard, I don't ever recall Maynard having a Fourth of July celebration. Everyone, if they're state local, they go run over to Acton and put all their money into Acton, and they're a part for their fireworks. So I, we felt like it made sense for the town as well. Try and bring people into town. It'll help downtown businesses with, hopefully bringing in people from Stowe, Boxborough, Acton, where there's really not a lot going around that time of year in this area. So we're looking to do just that, five-day carnival to celebrate the Fourth of July, make, bring in some additional revenue for our association to put back into the town.
When it comes to the fireworks, I did have a meeting-
Great people out there, right?
This is for, this is for, this is gonna be for the Oktoberfest one. I did have a meeting with Chief Stowers today. We went over and discussed possible shooting places, and that was the bigger thing with him and I today. Thursday, I'm going to have the information as he was requested, and he will make a final determination on that. He didn't seem like he was against it, long as, you know, we have the right amount of fire details. He was happy with the place that we, that I pretty much recommended to shoot them off. We've had such a wet season that there's not an issue with that either, so.
Where is it?
So, you know where the practice field is for the football? Right there. And then, 'cause that would give people the opportunity to come off of the pavement, maybe, you know, sit down on the other field and watch them.
So from like the Green Meadow side?
The backside of it, yes. Yes. There's a hydrant there too.
You have a question you wanna ask?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Not about fireworks, but about the, sort of the logistics of the setup. First, when I first read this, I thought that you were planning on having the, the actual carnival on the field, and that was a little concerning for me, but I understand it's not.
No.
So then I guess my question comes to logistically parking and traffic control and everything like that. I assume that, that Chief DeBois has been involved as well. How would you control traffic flow in that tight area where, you know, there's not much parking in Green Meadow? There's not much parking at the high school. If you get a big crowd for the fireworks, you're, you're talking 117. So what, what would you-
That would be, I, I can deal with the EMS and the fireworks. He's gonna deal with the traffic.
So, just to David's point, further on David's point, exactly where are we talking? In the parking lot at Fowler?
Yes.
In front of the school?
Yes.
Is that enough room?
Yes, both.
Using the backside too, the whole like L that's there?
Yes. And the roadway closes to the wood line on the high school side would keep that open in case fire personnel need to get down there for any reason, medical reasons, so they'd have access throughout the whole area.
Do we, I got, I guess, that being said, where it's kind of that close to school, what do we do about securing the school for the, you know, kids and people wandering around the back of the school, and, I mean, is equipment out there and stuff right, up behind that building up?
There will be police details up there.
Yeah.
I believe that's part of the permit that they require for-
Speaking of schools, do we have school permission to actually use-
No, there's another question too.
I've been in the paperwork with the Fowler School. We did meet-
Right.
-two weeks ago-
Yeah.
-and discussed this, and the business manager for the schools was the one who recommended doing it on the pavement at the school.
So would it be Dawn and her people that would have to vote on it, or would it be Bob's?
It's, it's approved. The facility use is approved by Michelle. Yeah, she approves those, and, and as Chris said, we met a couple of weeks ago. We've talked through the logistics, and it didn't sound like she was, you know, had any concerns about putting it there. It sounded like she was okay as long as there was no impact to fields and things like that, so it sounds like they're probably gonna approve it.
My biggest concern right now then would be traffic and parking and where people were walking and that type of thing.
So the chief is aware of the, both of these events that are being proposed. I spoke with him. He, if approved, there's, you know, there's still time. He would look to work with Fiesta Shows to put together a traffic plan to be able to address those, you know, whether certain closures, accessibility points, but that, I don't think that's been defined yet.
Presumably people would, would be parking even as far down as the mill parking lot to walk up.
Yeah, the high school parking lot-
Certainly Boys and Girls, certainly the Boys and Girls Club lot. There'll be some crossing, there's some crossing over.
It would be nice, you know, that area over alumni could-
Ah, I'm sorry.
That's a lot of people to fill those three parking lots.
Basketball.
Big turnout, yeah.
That'd be a lot of people.
Yeah.
But anyway. So, I mean, you know, both chiefs are involved. The DPW, is there anything involvement from them on their end? Is there anything they have to do?
Aaron was involved-
Aaron was involved in their meeting. Um, Fiesta Shows requires access to the hydrants. So they'd be putting a meter on it in the morning and taking it off at night and monitor.
What do you say?
Yeah.
Aaron and Chris were onsite last week. They physically went out and looked at it.
Did the power off through generators?
Looks like it'll be good.
Yes. Fiesta Show provides their own generators for it.
Okay.
And all the food inspection and stuff that's done by the DPW Department of Health?
Usually done the day in advance or that morning of the day of opening, but they'll have to get permits in advance for the special, you know, for whatever. I'm not sure what food vendors you're, you know, planning to have, but they would get temporary, um, permits, which would be for the duration, and they'd be issued through the Board of Health with appropriate inspections. Probably like a fried dough. I don't know what, typical carnival food.
My inspection is done by the.
That's DPS, yeah.
Department of Public Safety.
Fireworks inspection?
No, that would be.
Or the, for the rides?
The rides themselves, yeah.
Did you see, his name is Mr. Dean?
Yes.
So I have a question, Mr. Dean. Is five days typical? It seems like a long time.
No, that's, that's, well, it's typical the way the holiday, uh, uh, normally we run from four, either four or six days.
Did we go to the, from the 30th to the? Okay. So it's closed the 3rd?
Close at the 4th.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. 30th and, alright, it's just broken up differently, alright. So, what day of the week is the 4th this year?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So from Friday to Tuesday? A lot of cotton candy. Um, okay, so.
I'm sorry.
So, that's, and then the other one is three days?
Yes.
Yes.
If I could just ask a question of you, sir. Um, what's the, what's the plan for, uh, housing during that timeframe? Is some temporary housing, is it gonna be onsite typically?
We have temporary housing.
So that'll all be reviewed with the Health Department as well?
Yes, they, usually the fire department inspects and the building inspector inspects.
Okay.
Where would that be placed?
Excuse me?
That also be on the footprint of the?
Yes, yes.
Not on, not on the lawn?
No, no, behind the music rise.
Stay off his grass. So, how many people are we talking about temporary housing for? Typically, typically?
We're talking somewhere between 18 and 22.
Okay.
22 rides. So figured two people per ride.
Okay. Tim, do you have any questions?
No.
Tim, any more questions?
Yeah, so, uh, what's the town's cost in this? Have we figured that out?
Yeah, I, I think our costs, um, it's, it's been borne by the applicant. We've, uh, trash cleanup, um, any, you know, building the site back to its original condition, um, you know, police details, those things will all be borne by the applicant.
Okay.
So there's.
Okay.
You know, any, any DPW activity that's needed that may come up, um, certainly D2, police details.
So is there a, is there a?
There's gonna be a fire detail inevitably with probably the supervision of the fireworks.
Be, uh, three.
Delivery.
If, if accepted, I already told the chief that I would be around because being the holiday weekend, I'm not going anywhere, so I will make sure that I'm on for that day with them setting up. But we'd have three other personnel for when the fireworks go off to actually be around, you know, to, to, as we do at the mill, and, and we'd be going through and checking for any shells that didn't go off and all that.
Is there a, um, is there an inspection process prior to setup and then for post?
For?
For the site.
Oh.
So, um, you know, I'm, like, we talked about return to its original condition. You know, you park a machine there for so many days, if it sinks into the pavement, you know, that type of stuff.
Now the DP, Aaron, we can definitely have Aaron.
No, listen, you know, do, is that part of the process? I'm, I guess that's the question.
Setting up a, a camp for the hot top.
So, so prior to your setup, is there an inspection of the property from the town that would, so they would have an idea of what the property looks like before we start? So in the event that, you know, something goes through the, the, the hot top or something goes through something, then it's repaired, that type of thing?
That'll all be covered under the insurance policy.
Right, but I'm just asking how we get to, how we get, how do you get to the insurance policy? Is there a pre-setup inspection?
A pre-imposed assessment.
How do I, how do, yeah, how do we, how does the town and Fiesta Shows come to an agreement as to what the property looked like on June 28th when they started setup?
Well, we, we obviously could walk around with somebody from the school department.
Yeah, I'm just asking if that's typical, or that's, or suggesting that that's something that we'd like to see happen as a town. That we'd like to just do a pre-inspection so we know what, what's there when we start and we know what's there when we're done.
Maybe, gentlemen, take some pictures of the existing parking lot.
I mean, yeah, so when you rent an automobile, you do a walk-around. I'm just asking for a walk-around.
That sounds reasonable. We set something up through, uh, Aaron, whether it's Aaron or Tim. Tim Goulding.
Huh? So, any other questions, David? Jason?
Um, just a quick clarification on the, so we're launching fireworks from behind Green Meadow?
Behind, no. So, the viewpoint would be behind Fowler School in the field. People can put a blanket down, watch. The shooting is basically right over. It's the same level, which is good because with the five-inch shell, it only goes so high, but that's typically what Chief Stowers approves anyways, is up to that. But he agrees that, looking at the Google Maps, and him and I drove in that way, that'd be the best place for viewing and for safety.
But the launch would be?
But the launch would be from.
It would be behind Green Meadow.
Yes. The launch is from behind, we're gonna get to that, both of these now. The launch is from behind Green Meadow and the sitting area would be behind Fowler. Yeah. Gee, you're rushing me.
There's that, that, the size diameter of the projectile determines the.
The height.
The height, right? So that's regulated anyway.
Pretty much what, what we've done, um, down at the, uh, mill, same. He's on, it's only been up to five inches.
Right.
Okay. No, we'd only think.
Banning drones that day.
It would have to be, if anything, it would be more of making sure like, um, um, like med flight or anything like that if they had to come in for something, but, yeah.
How long is the, um, fireworks show?
That's, well, that's to be determined, um.
Ruining it right now. No one's gonna come, David.
Between 14 and 18 minutes?
Yeah.
Big finale.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? All those in favor of the five-day carnival in July?
Good luck, guys.
Doing advertising now?
Will be tomorrow.
Yeah.
So some local ones that you run are, um, Acton, Hopkinton, Acton, Hopkinton, and Lancaster.
So.
Those would be the closest.
Of who he's done it for?
That you run, yeah.
So Holliston, Angelo, who's on the department, you've done Holliston, how many is?
Not Hollison, uh, uh, Acton.
I mean, uh, Acton.
Acton.
Yeah, so Acton's been one of them too.
And then Lancaster and Hopkinton?
Yeah.
Lancaster, Hollywood.
The Bolton Fair.
I've been going to the Lexington one since I was little.
Hoffield Fair, yeah.
Alright, so, that's the only question is just the walk-around, you know, walk-around inspection prior to?
Yeah, we'll set that up.
With Aaron?
Yeah.
You can set it up with the schools, but they're just gonna call Aaron, so you might as well call him from front.
Correct.
Alright, thank you, guys. Are you staying?
So we don't, yeah, um, Agenda 10 is for a, uh, another special permit and a liquor license request, um, from Whole House Group. I know this is an initiative, so just kinda a little bit of background laws if I could. Um, I know, uh, Greg Hill, proprietor of, um, the, managing partner of Whole House Group and the operator of, uh, the Battle Road Brewery, um, shortly after last year's, um, notification that the Oktoberfest wasn't going to happen, that the Rotary was no longer going to host the Oktoberfest. I know he was interested in maintaining it, having been a Stowe resident and come to for many years, attended the, uh, Maynard Fest and Oktoberfest. He was looking to continue that tradition and kind of sponsor it and kind of spearhead, take the leadership on it. Um, at last year's timing, just based on when we got notice of it not happening and, um, them in the midst of trying to open the fall, of opening the brewery, and, uh, just timing-wise didn't work out of the town. We did meet with him and, uh, he was trying to do it and make it happen, and just logistically, it just wasn't able to. So I think this year, early on, he, um, kinda tasked Liz with getting on that. She's reached out, spoke with some town officials about, um, kinda taking that over, and I think it's, and this is where I have somewhat of an update, but it's evolved into a little bit more in a longer duration. So, um, that's the evidence from what I understand of where this, uh, it was stemming from, was to continue the, the Maynard Oktoberfest event, um, and to allow, you know, some opportunity for some other, uh, um, businesses in town and some local craft brewers and things like that. And then somehow, um, the Relief Association, uh, has teamed up as well. So, I'll let you speak to that, but I know that's the, the piece from my, my conversations over the last 12 months with, with them.
Alright, so let me just read this for the record, just so we have it. So, everyone's happy with that. "Move to accept and approve a special permit and one-day liquor license for Oktoberfest event at 5 Mill and Main parking lot on Friday, September 22nd, 2017, from 6:00 PM until 10:30 PM. Saturday, September 23rd, and Sunday, September 24th, from 2:00 PM until 10:30 PM. Conditions: Approved permission from Mill and Main. All malt and wine will be served by TIPS cert, TIPS, TIPS-trained staff in the fenced-off area. Fiesta Shows will provide Town of Maynard with proper certificate of liability insurance, naming the Town of Maynard as additional insured. Fiesta Shows must schedule a Mass Department of Public Safety to inspect all rides prior to opening. Must have police details, dumpsters, and portable toilets made available. And any fireworks displayed must be approved by Fire Chief Stowers." Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I guess all the, I guess all the questions would be the same, but.
So I can, Mr. Chair, just before you present, we did today receive, um, official notice approval from, uh, the Mill and Main management to use the space, um, that we, we got that today, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you guys are, I mean, you guys, we know that you guys are familiar with the police and fire chiefs and all that, so. Just those, those conditions just have to be met. Um. Really, I don't have any questions about that. The fireworks, where are they gonna be from the?
So, I, Chief Stowers and I talked about that today. Um, we're still discussing that one. Um, we're gonna end up Thursday, we have a seat, there was two options, and, um, one was possibly a barge from the company we're looking into, um, and then we're looking in for another location to shoot them off.
Okay, so, what side of the, what side of the pond are we on? The side where the restaurant is?
Yes, it's gonna be right in front.
So we're going from the side we used to be on to the other side? The, the Oktoberfest was typically in, in the other side, so we're switching sides?
Main Street side, yeah.
Okay.
Particularly, um, I think, you know, the interest with being part of, within the business establishment too.
And how much of that space are we gonna use, you're gonna use for the Fiesta Show?
About half of it, I think.
So that fir, if you go look at, uh, where the, um, the little islands are now.
Yeah.
So that first, from Sudbury Street to that first set of islands would not be utilized, but you know how they have a big space in between? You've got where we come in and where you can come out, well, that would be where his front entrance, it's really nice, he showed it, um, of how to come in. You know, where the stairs are for the upper Sudbury parking lot, there'd be another booth right there, but the main entrance would be there and then back, and then the, we have talked about the requirement for the alcohol to be away from the carnival. So, we've talked about if we were going to do, like, uh, live music for that Saturday.
So, are you suggesting that it's gonna be two separate items on the same piece of property? There's the beer and the Oktoberfest, and then there's the carnival in a separate area?
It's all the same, but they asked that, you wanna keep, because, you know, with, with the alcohol, you're gonna wanna have, you know, put bans on, you know, wristbands on people, so you kinda wanted that just a little bit away from the rides.
Right.
So that's where we're kinda working out the logistics the other day with that, but it seemed everyone had enough space for what they had to do.
Well, the alcohol would be served and consumed within a delineate.
Within that area, yes.
So that it can be controlled.
So is the, is the carnival the same? There's a, there's a fence or some sort of, you know, barrier around the outside edge of the, they use the space that you'll use?
Yes, so when we lay out the music rides, we can, the rides are like circles, but we, we keep the fences together so that they're own barrier.
Yeah, so, so, so just, it'll be similar to Lexington in that, you know, you go in and you go in one way and you go out the same way. And it's either by, you know, the, the fences that the fields create, or your fence will create the barrier so that, so to keep that same theme going, you go in one way and go out the other.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
My question again goes back to parking for that particular area. Um, please speak with the church.
We've discussed that, yes.
Okay, because, you know, it's Friday or Saturday.
It would be the four o'clock mass. Yes.
That you don't wanna interrupt their parking.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, again, I think, depending on the size of the crowd, the parking for that could be difficult too, although, because I don't think the church is gonna be wanting people parked maybe even during off-hours, but.
We're talking about possibly, um, you know, get the, the Main Street parking lot too, for, uh, you got Thompson Street with the mill. So you got plenty of areas, but if we had a, if we have to, on that Saturday, put temporary barrier up, you know, fencing up for St. Bridget's parking lot 'cause they don't want parking, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, I, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, I figured much too.
Plus the ultimate decision on the fireworks, it will be some separation. That's why I wasn't sure what the delineation of parking was gonna be, 'cause.
No, because.
Depending on where those are set off.
I, to be honest with you, I think, I think that Stowers and I are leaning towards just Crow Park.
Okay.
Because of the height of Crow Park too, you'd be able to see it from down there. So that's what we're looking at, but of course, we put the permit in and all that and let you guys know beforehand, but we just talked about that today and we're gonna take a drive-out on, um, Thursday.
Okay.
For logistic purposes.
Does anybody have any other questions for?
We talked about the traffic too, David, about that, about that, yeah, so. That was just discussed.
Anything else, Jason?
Yeah, so, and I, maybe this is just something I misunderstood, Kevin. Um, Whole House will be have, essentially the Brew Pub will be there. You mentioned something else about craft breweries.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions. I don't know what, if there's been more discussions about allowing any other local businesses to partake, and I know, um, my decision, and Liz and I haven't spoken about this, but conversations with Greg was he wanted, there's some other craft beer places that they had relationships with that they, that they may consider allowing, but I, I don't know on the food end, um, you know, what discussions you, has transpired, so.
Um, I think food-wise, it's gonna be the Brew Pub and, um, the carnival.
The carnival itself, okay.
I'm more concerned about the, the license for the, if it's all being handled through Whole House, then I don't have.
It would all be handled through Whole House, whether they're serving multiple or not was the, was the question, and I don't know if that's changed.
Um, we haven't 100% come to a decision. If we do bring in others, it'd be very minimal, um, possibly like a local cider and maybe one or two other breweries.
So the food is?
Wouldn't be a huge event.
But the service would still be from, you'd be serving their product essentially.
Right, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but so the food is all, other than the food that they serve within the carnival area, is all gonna be through the Brew Pub?
Yep.
Okay.
So in that case, if it's all going through Whole House for liquor, so ultimately beer, wine, whatever it happens to be, then.
It would be their.
By the single term.
Correct, yeah. It would be their staff and employees and, and TIPS-certified, uh, employees.
They do it every day, I think they do.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Tim, Tim?
Negative.
Mr. Gavin?
All set.
Alright, all those in favor? We are gonna be on Carnival overload.
Because there was a question.
Oh, there was a question? Who had a question? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you. I, I just had a question. Has the bank confirmed with the Rotary Club that they were not pursuing, um, Oktoberfest?
Yes, it has been.
Their event, yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's the, um, Christmas parade.
That was what funded.
Yeah. Just be some follow-up and?
We've, we'll discuss that with, with you guys another time, but we'll be more than happy.
We'll discuss the Christmas parade in a future day?
Yeah.
Good.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fifty-one years, alright. See you, guys. Nice meeting you. Liz, good to see you.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, thank you.
Open table. Open Table.
Flying through.
Hello, Patty.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Patty needs no introduction, but as a board member of Open Table, the board has a request, essentially, the narrative from Townplanted, Bill Nemser, and the conversations that have transpired as they have starting to almost finish the Open Table project at the former Abushan Hardware, and have realized a need for ingress and egress access on the rear of the facility, particularly as we talked about potentially the impact of blocking out meters and impacts that that may have on Main Street, and coming up with creative solutions to allow them to be able to function with using the access in the rear, in the parking lot space. So, that's why Patty's before us this evening, and the request that you have for use of townland space to put in a ADA sidewalk access, so. Patty, you can elaborate better than I, but.
So, as Kevin mentioned, we have been working with DPW and with the planning board, Bill Nemser, about putting in a back entrance portion of the land, it's my understanding, it's on town property. So, there's a sidewalk that's been planned by DPW to go around one portion of the, of the back area, and then, so we would need to connect. And we would have to have an ADA ramp and stairs. So we're working with our engineers to come up with a plan. In the meantime, it's not gonna be done by the time we open in August, so we were looking to take the two meters in front for the, just the time that the pantry is open, the eleven hours during the week, and cover up the meters, and then reimburse the town the cost of whatever you would incur for that eleven hours' worth of parking. So there wouldn't be any loss. We, we have, our guests are all, as you're aware, they come in by appointment, so there's five people at a time coming through, and they will be parking elsewhere, they won't be parked at those spots, so as they get their groceries, they'll go get their car from wherever they're parked in the town, and drive up to the lot. Our volunteers will load the groceries into their car, and then they'll be off.
So... The, do they actually dine in that building, or no?
Yep, they'll, there's dinner in the, there's a dining room in the front part, the dinner is on Tuesday evenings.
You mean, construction-wise?
You should take a look inside.
Yeah, considerable.
Oh, did you say dine or done?
Dine.
Done.
Eat, in the, so, do, 'cause you just said they, they come and they, by appointment, they take it and go, so do the, do people actually sit and eat?
So, they're two nights.
So it's, Tuesday is the supper, and then there's pantry days.
Correct.
Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday.
Correct.
Okay.
So, on Mondays and Thursdays, they're just coming in, getting their groceries. They, they walk through, they'll have a grocery cart, walk through, pick up their groceries, they get bagged. They'll go out the side entrance, and then they will get their car, while a volunteer comes around and will load the groceries. And then, the next five people will come through, everybody's on an appointment. We're also, the board is gonna vote tomorrow night to, to put a hold on for the next two months, or for August and September, for not taking in any new guests, until we get situated and see, you know, how our existing clientele is coming through.
So, Kevin, okay. I'm reading, I haven't read it yet, but I'm reading the motion, and what do we actually, according to this, we're really actually just discussing sidewalk repair?
Yeah, I think the initial-
That's what the motion covers?
Correct, access to, and it sounds like there's an additional request for a temporary, I don't know what that duration may be, but until, certainly until that construction were to happen, there's an additional request for the meters, which would be a different-
Given that that wasn't on the agenda, we probably shouldn't vote on that, but the, and there's still plenty of time to come back, to have that discussed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could put it on the next meeting if we, if we have to, because I was, I'm reading, I'm reading all the information, and it's, it's, you know, it's nice, because it's more than we typically get from information from anybody. So it's, I mean, it's thorough as we ever see, so I don't have a problem with it, but then I'm reading the motion, and the motion doesn't mention, you know, your parking suggestion or any of those other things, so I'm just, I don't, I just wanna make sure what-
Yeah, the meters are totally, that was an added thing that came up, but the, the parking, the parking in the rear is a non-issue, I mean, it's public parking.
But the parking is all public parking.
Yeah, it's the issue of constructing on town property, sidewalk access across town property for their building, egress.
Yeah, I know, I know, so, so what we're talking about right now is, so, is this.
Correct.
That, that sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Everyone can see at home. So, so that's what we're really talking about tonight, but these, these other issues, do any of these other issues require us to take any action later?
Correct, yeah, if, if we were to approve the request of the meters, the board would have to take action to allow that.
And the meters would be changed to create a, and you kept accessibility?
No, they'd just be covered up, so they could use-
Turn those timeframes?
It would be reserved.
They would reimburse us, they would-
We're looking for a reserved timeframe of those, but two spots that are directly out in front of the, of the property on Main Street.
Would be reimbursed for their use.
Correct.
One of the things that was on here, I saw, it looks like we're, the model plan is to park on private property, have we discussed that with the owners of the Walgreens, the former Wal-
That, that was an era on Open Table's part, when they were putting the, the document together, they, there was a misunderstanding, they thought the Walgreens was town parking, and it has been corrected. I sent out a revised one to Andrew this afternoon.
All right, so.
I haven't seen it, I've been mediation all day.
All right, so, I'll read this motion that we have, then, it's, it's move to approve the request for Open Table to construct a sidewalk across town property with all costs borne by the requister, and in accordance with applicable construction standards, and a request for rear entrance accessible access to building for Open Table. So, do we have a second? Thank you, Jason. I guess, does anyone have any other questions about it?
I have a couple of questions, and it can't be answered right now, I understand, but snow removal for those particular locations, do you have any idea what, how that would be taken care of, and?
It's the landlord, right?
For, I know that we have, we will be hiring somebody to do the snow removal for, I know, the front of our building, so my guess is they would be doing that, that walkway.
And then, the other thing is, I was down there Sunday, looking at the area in anticipation of this discussion. But as, and I was standing on the other side, but as I look at the picture here, the building on the right, that was, that's sort of where, as, with the picture, so next to El Whipple.
Okay.
That building has a metal roof. My issue is, when it does snow, and the snow starts to slide off, and you've got a walkway underneath that, there might be some issues of danger.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the other side, the roof seems different, so there's gonna be different melting speeds, and you're gonna have sliding off of snow coming at various times. That's a concern, just from a public safety standpoint, for me. It's, you know, I think we can probably work around it in some way, but it's something that really needs to be coordinated by you guys, 'cause I don't want anybody getting hurt.
Mm-hmm.
You know, anybody, especially guests coming in, suddenly there comes a slide of snow.
Right.
I'm sorry, did ownership of the, of the building change?
Yes.
It did.
Which building?
Of the Abushan building?
Yes.
Yes, we, we purchased the building, and we passed papers on May thirtieth.
Okay, so you're actually the owner of the building now, we don't deal with George at all anymore? The gentleman that used to-
He owns the other portion that was separated off of it.
Abushan Realty, who was the owner of the space there, but George Drizos. Drizos, he still owns the space that David's referencing, that building.
So that would be his responsibility, though, right? That wouldn't be Open Table's responsibility.
Only to the effect that Open Table has this walkway that goes through there, that will, but, a building that-
You know, I, yeah, I don't, I don't, snow, snow sliding off a roof, I don't know who.
Say in private, a walkway on private property.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate the comment, but that's up to-
Well, is that walkway on, I thought, is the only part of the town property, then, the?
Behind the building.
I'll pass the fence post, probably.
Four and a half inch, four and a half foot increase?
Well, it's probably beyond those fence posts, right?
Correct, yeah.
So from the fence post to the parking lot is the town property.
So if you look at the next picture-
The town property's out of, yeah.
Wasn't there a discussion at one point, maybe it was at a different location, when George was in here, he was talking about a strip of land that was owned by the town?
Yeah, that was on the other side, by a wheat burlap.
That's in between him and El Whipple, back in the other side.
The town basically-
He was trying to, he was trying to steal that land from somebody.
Basically, the town owns right up to the door of what the former Abushan entrance was.
Yeah.
So we're talking about, just, you know, the, the, where, the picture that says approximate four-foot grade, from the bottom of that arrow up to where that white car or silver cars in the parking lot.
Yes.
Grass and dirt there, heading towards that electric charging station.
From what I understand, that'd be like a set of steps going up there, and then some type of a ramp that goes to the left.
Right, we'd have to make a ramp to make it ADA compliant.
Okay, let's, I mean-
And that would be on town property, too, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so you guys own up to that where it says four-foot grade? Or is that, that land part of your building or the other building?
Our building.
Okay, so your building, if you look at the next picture, it says OT access point from North Municipal Parking Lot. Your building is on the left or the right?
The one, the one you can't see.
Oh.
The one that's not showing a building, so it'd be the right. You're looking at, looking from the parking lot in, or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking down that alley.
Their building would be on the left.
Ours is the one on the left, that has, you can see, there's-
A little door with a light?
Yep, the door with the light, and it has that little parking, that little, like, little ramp.
Yep, yep, further up.
Yep.
Okay, so that's your building. Who owns the land between the two buildings? Do we, right, are we on?
I thought it was the town.
Okay, if I could, could I refer the board to the second file under this, public, under the public content, which is Open Table's proposal, which shows an aerial view with property lines? That way, I think you'd get a better understanding of where the, where the property lines are, I believe, in reason, and the location of the sidewalks.
All right, thank you.
Are those buildings no longer connected?
No.
So that's what's, that's what's deceiving when you see the picture, 'cause you're used to coming in and taking that left into the other old option, okay.
The whole original setup was, they own, they own the land, but not the building.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that was crazy off there.
Also, oh, I didn't know that, that's, that's why I was confused.
Yeah, me too, so that's, that's gone there, I guess.
That's gone, that Eves.
Okay.
That Eve is gone, and now it's one building, two buildings. And George owns one sixty-nine, I think, right?
He owns to the bottom of the picture. He owns this.
I thought he owned this one in front, 'cause his store was, 'cause his store was up there.
Correct.
He owns this also.
And David, you were referring to this down here, I think, that area?
I thought it was in the area, yeah.
Yeah, remember, yeah, okay.
Like a little area here, apparently.
All right.
Well, congratulations on your purchase.
Thank you.
Okay, I mean, does anybody have any other questions about it? I mean, the snow, is it snowfall, I, that's-
I thought that was town property, so that, never mind.
Do we have an official open date?
We, we do. I don't have it with me, we're doing our it's the first Monday in August is when we first, our first pantry. Our great, official grand opening, 'cause August is gonna be like a soft opening.
Okay.
September tenth is our grand opening.
Okay, seemed like they were going to town in there, I haven't been in the ins, the inside space, but-
Yeah, if you, if you get an opportunity to go down and look, I mean, they'll certainly have you there, you know, invitations will come out for the grand opening, but I was in there today, and I hadn't been in there in quite a few weeks, and it's gorgeous.
I just looked through the window.
Yeah, it's, it's very well done.
A little off-topic, but essentially, yeah, what, what's the plan for the signage on Main Street? Is that gonna essentially just go over the existing Abushan space? That was originally the Abushan sign?
Right, I, there's, I, I see, there's two, there's, the lights are up there.
Right.
And that's, we're, and it's, right, and it's just gonna be Open Table.
It'll just say Open Table.
Right.
Okay. Tim, any questions? No? Okay, Terrence?
No, good.
David? Jason?
Yeah, Kevin, can you, since I, I already answered this, a question for you, so, the location of the proposed sidewalk, so the sidewalk will run from, I was looking at it, basically across the back property line of the Open Table parcel in one sixty-nine, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, one sixty-nine may be a parcel idea, probably addresses thirty-one Main Street.
Correct.
Well, it's, it's got three buildings on it, so it's, it's-
Yeah, it is the one sixty-nine parcel on that area. Yeah, that's correct.
It's gonna run across the back of that, and then, that's gonna be completely above town.
Town's going to engineer it, because they're already putting in a sidewalk adjacent to it, so they're gonna do all the engineering, and all the construction. They're gonna build a portion of it that is being required by Open Table, being requested by Open Table, to Open Table. So if the whole thing costs ten thousand dollars, and half of it is, you know, Open Tables will pay five thousand of the cost.
So, the town's going to be ma, so the town's gonna be making some improvements, probably by midsummer, midsummer, which will be from Main Street on side, coming down, which will be sidewalk improvement into the basin, crossing hash, hash line where the receiving bay is from, essentially, the halfway space. In front of El Whipple, there'll be a continuation of that sidewalk that will wrap around to provide connection to, really, the Summer Street lot. So that's all going to happen, so we wanna be able to design this, you know, simultaneously, in connection with continuing that, but this will be added access, that will be a cost that will be associated directly, that Open Table will pay for.
We had already put the sidewalk construction out to bid, the design and construction, so the cost is-
The problem is, so we, we have an, we have an asphalt by two minutes bid, we don't have a concrete bid. So this work is being a little bit pushed off, we started earlier summer, but the concrete bid is going out. So once that concrete bid comes back, they'll start the full work for that access point. Right now, it's still the temporary space, even where El Whipple is. All that improvement is part of that bigger kind of connectivity picture. But we're, we're waiting on a concrete bid price to come back, as a separate contractor.
Okay, so, we've run three different avenues here, so I'm just gonna try and, I'm just, for my own sanity. We're putting in a new sidewalk from Main Street along what was the halfway cafe?
Yeah, there's already some sidewalk there, but that side will be improved, and will be ADA compliant, will continue.
So it's gonna come down the side of that, the brick building?
Correct.
Past the dumpster location?
Correct.
Past the front of El Whipple. Now, we have the new patio space.
So there'll be a few bollards put in.
So we're gonna go in front of that patio space, along the newly, the newly marked eleven spaces?
Correct.
Correct, okay, all the way up to, I assume, what is shown on this drawing?
Correct.
And then, we're going to turn that, and run across the back lines over to the Summer Street lot?
Yes.
Okay, that's all being done?
Midsummer, correct.
Okay, so the only piece that we're talking about for Open Table is the piece that connects into that?
Correct.
And a ramp.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah.
I think the ramp is actually on their property and is on their own.
But it's gonna be, the price, the cost is borne by them, actually.
We're not gonna be doing the ramps, I mean-
That's not our business, per se, you need it for your, for your guests.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess, what, what portion of the sidewalk work is then shared? 'Cause it sounds like we're, we're putting a sidewalk in from Main Street all the way to the Summer Street lot, along the, on town property, and that that's what we were going to do.
So let's assume it's a straight line from, like, El Whipple to the charging station, that's where the sidewalk's ended with. And there's gonna be a T that takes to the rear engines of the Open Table building. The T is what they're paying for.
Yeah, I still want to follow.
See this, Jason?
There's a separate plan that I can provide that shows-
Perpendicular off the sidewalk, that, that yellow strip that you're seeing? I think what Andrew's saying, perpendicular off that, will go in, in between those two buildings to her, to Open Table's property. That's how I'm understanding, is that?
It's not really in between those, but-
But towards, I mean, if you look at the picture, it looks like it's going towards, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I can send you, Jason, the VHB has provided a design plan for the sidewalk piece. It's, anything above and beyond that will be Open Table, specifically for Open Table, and above and beyond what the town- Will be Open Table, specifically for Open Table and above and beyond what the town, um, improvement was planned for.
Okay.
But then, once you see that VHB design plan.
That may make it more clear.
It'll be clearer.
I'm, I'm struggling how there could be that much of a cost share on an extra seventy feet of concrete sidewalk, designing a concrete sidewalk, when you design, you design five feet of that.
Right. There's not much, but there's some, and the town's not paying it. So whether, you know, it's five dollars or five thousand, sort of irrelevant, yeah. And that, you know, that, that discussion we've had, just, you know, any, any, any impact, you know, that, that was our concerns.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I guess, Chris, the only I'd like to, I'd like to see the, maybe their requests on the next meeting.
Yeah, we gotta, they have to, that has to come back.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Did we read the motion yet?
I read it, and, and yeah, and Jason seconded it. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Negative.
What's the date of the next meeting?
Nineteenth.
Okay.
Twenty, I'm sorry, twentieth, yeah.
June twentieth.
June twentieth. Will you be the one?
I, I'll have to talk about it, I have a retirement party that evening, but for somebody at work, um, but if not, I'll get back.
We'll communicate. Either way, we're gonna, we'll add it to the agenda and.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Flying along.
Twelve, ratification.
Item twelve is the ratification vote for the AFSCME Council ninety-three, local seventeen oh three, or more commonly referred to as the Clerical Union Agreement. Uh, the board is, uh, seeing the MOA and the agreement with regards to, um, updates that were provided in executive session, this is the public ratification. Just a couple of highlights on the, um, on the updated agreement, there was, uh, some, several typographical or clarifying, uh, language changes that, you know, that, uh, both sides had no concerns about, that, um, not actual change to any terms, but some opportunity to correct those things. Uh, some of the more higher, higher level stuff is there was a, um, agreement as it related to, uh, prorating time off benefits, uh, at the time of hire, um, for folks that, uh, prorate and accrue as to far as separation of, uh, employment, that they wouldn't be entitled to the full amount, there'd be a prorated basis, uh, if they were to leave the employee of the town, which currently didn't exist. Um, we rewrote, uh, use of some of the sick bank process, uh, specifically approvals and amounts of time and contributions and how that would play out. Um, if you recall, there was adjustment on the bereavement language, so that it was consistent with, um, all of the other collective bargain agreements and the town policies as it relates to bereavement. Um, and particularly just kinda clarifying, uh, the level of, of immediate family, um, with the common day, uh, expansion of, uh, step, um, parents and, and siblings. Uh, there's no change to the step table and the, the big, uh, item was the COLAs, the cost of living allowances, um, for FY eighteen was, uh, two percent, two point oh percent for FY nineteen, uh, two percent and one point seven five percent for fiscal year twenty. Um, a three-year agreement, uh, in effect until June thirtieth of twenty twenty. You have the motion there?
Alright, this is. Move to accept and approve the AFSCME Council ninety-three, local one seven zero three agreement with a term of July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Give us a second. Any other comments about this?
Just a reminder, I'll be abstaining from voting.
Mr. Donovan's abstained. So we'll know other questions? All those in favor of ratification? Thank you. We have the town administrative report, lovely report that it is. Alright, um, anything else, Kevin?
I feel like there was something, but.
One or both?
I'll think of it.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Alright.
Trying to remember.
We're gonna zip through that.
Still spinning from my day in Boston.
So.
We're in a big city, huh? Haven't recovered yet?
Three hours of one-way commute.
So I have just two quick things. Uh, the first one is that I met with Kevin and Andrew with Joel Kahn at Joel Kahn's request, um, a week or two ago, and Joel Kahn, as everybody knows, is the, he represents the developer, that's looking to build what they call Powder Mill Place, and, um, just a few things that came away that, first is that, as of that meeting and as of today, there were no agreements of any kind in place between Maynard and either the developer or the town of Acton. And specifically with regards to sewer needs, both Acton and the developer have suggested that, you know, Acton could provide water service but not sewer, and if they had to provide sewer, it would be an extraordinary cost, and that's why they have suggested that they, um, use Maynard Sewer going forward and arrange for that in a, you know, in a MOA or some other manner. But it's a, you know, that's a, seems to me that that would be a bargaining chip for Maynard going forward, but, um, you know, in talking to the, to Joel Kahn and those folks, I can guarantee that as of now, there's no agreement or no suggestion of an agreement, it's just that, uh, both the developer and Acton had suggested that Acton cannot handle the sewer needs for this project. And then, uh, the second thing is, is that, um, the developer would like to have the board of selectmen, at least two people from the board of selectmen, work together with them and Andrew and Kevin and whoever else needs to be involved in a sort of working group, um, to be, you know, to be established and work on any negotiations and planning that take place as part of this project, and then, you know, that working group would come back and that, the, the representatives from the board would report back to the board and we'd move ahead like we did similar to some of the other projects that we've done in the past several years.
With the intent of essentially the working group working towards a development agreement.
Yeah, a development agreement or MOA.
And I think more than likely, um, not sure at what point in the process, but certainly, uh, attorney, Adam Costa would, uh, would be part of that group as well.
Right, and then, you know, so it's been, I don't know if anyone else has cut in the emails, but I got, I've had a couple emails asking to be part of the, um, Powder Mill Place group, um, steering committee or something along those lines, a few people have asked me that, that they could get on that committee and I'm, like, there is no committee. So we'll see where they, you know, I would suggest that the committee would create a situation that this town is very unwilling to have, the committee and the delays that such a committee would, would create would.
The, the developer has committed to holding as many public, uh, sessions as we felt were necessary, they're, they're more than happy to do that, um, but yeah, I haven't seen any requests of such a committee.
Yeah, I've had a couple people ask me if they could be on that committee if it's formed and I haven't had anyone from anywhere else suggest that there would be a committee, so I don't know about the committee. And the, um, the other issue that I, that I have in my notes here about is, um, I know Kevin, we talked about it, Bill Nemsah brought it up to me, um, I've spoken about it with, with Melissa and, and Terrence had a couple calls on it at least, and I'm sure that others have had it, and that's the, um, issue that seems to be cropping up downtown with one of the, um, larger landlords in the downtown area, with the leases and the changes in the leases and the adjustments that he's made, um, as people renew their lease, and it seems to be a type of thing where, uh, he's, you know, he's going to a triple net, he's looking to make it somewhat, you know, onerous to be a tenant in his facilities and buildings, and it seems to be, um, draw, chasing some of our longstanding businesses or smaller businesses out of their, um, current locations and out of town, if not out of business altogether, so. Um, in that, a couple of things that I've found out in the last few days in talking with Kevin and Andrew and everybody else was that, you know, really as a board, we don't have a legal standing as far as getting involved and that there's not any precedent in, um, that anyone could find in, in, in the government of Maynard, the town government, that suggests that, you know, we have been involved in those things in the past, but, um, that being said, I don't think it's a situation that we can just ignore either. Um, but Bill Nemsah's told me that the EDC is gonna meet or suggest a meeting with the tenant group, Andrew, or, or with the, with the, with the landlord?
Yeah, so there's two things. We, we started having tenant meetings, um, last November, December, we hope to do those, uh, twice a year, we're kinda due to set one up, um, and we also wanna have a landlord meeting to sort of have a, you know, see where they're at collectively, um, you know, perhaps there's some motivation, perhaps this person we're talking about, uh, this company has an intention to bring in, uh, other businesses and is trying to open up space, I have no idea, so.
Yeah.
We wanna have that kind of meeting, the, the needs of the tenants versus the landlords, uh, could be drastically different, we might have separate, separate meetings.
Something else, Chris, if I may.
You may.
We talked about in the past, um, as a way sort of to encourage landlords to, um, to keep their, their places occupied and seek out that, uh, we could follow the lead, and I think Arlington has done this.
Arlington has, yeah.
Yeah, where they had, there's a bylaw that limits the amount of time that, uh, storefronts can remain empty without there being some type of, of a, um, penalty that's imposed by the community, uh, as long as the landlord is showing due diligence to, uh, get the people in and they're not obstructing.
Sort of like the pocket liver license issue.
Exact, um, so that would be something that perhaps if, you know, we'd have to look into the, the legalities of it and the way we're implementing it, but for any of our storefronts downtown, that might be long time empty locations, that we might be able to put some pressure on the landlord, um, to require them to, you know, and I think what they do there, at a minimum anyway, is also put up artwork or something to make it at least look better, um, when storefronts are empty, um, but, uh, that's a different topic.
I spoke to Bill Nemsah about it, he's looking into the, the, um, the Arlington bylaw and then the state, you know, what, what state regulations are fallen under, he was gonna let us know when he, when he found that information out about, about Arlington, but.
We also officially heard, not from them directly, but that, uh, the Bank of America space was gonna become vacant as well. Just got notice of that yesterday, that they're, I think, they say September one?
It was September.
It's a separate, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think there's any correlation, but it's just another vacant.
That the, uh, vacancy penalty, so to speak, has been looked at by probably three or four different boards in town, and, um, and we've really gone nowhere with it, and I'm hoping that there is somebody with some legal knowledge on the board, maybe we can finally get out of that rut and, and do it. Again, the goal is never to penalize folks for, you know, turnover, but certainly keep a building from sitting empty for twelve years and having to, you know, fight tooth and nail to get, you know, glass fixed and, and things like that, so hopefully that can be.
Okay, well, you know, so that's all I have, is those two items and, um, how'd you make out with the recreation committee, Becky? They're supposed to appoint someone and send them to us or something? Or are you just gonna ignore that request? Well, if they're gonna ignore the request, ju- just have their chairman come in and we'll explain it to him in this room. That, that, there's a set of rules in place and if he doesn't wanna follow them, he can resign his chairmanship of the recreation committee, and we'll find someone else to fill that spot as well. I mean, there's rules in place, I know that you've explained them to him, if he doesn't wanna comply, we'll change him out.
He's unresponsive on a lot of matters.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll send him, I'll send him a, I'll send him a letter and we'll send it certified registered mail and then we'll just explain it to him.
The only committee commissioned in the town that, that has nothing in the annual town report.
I'll send him, I'll send him a letter, I'll sit down with you tomorrow and craft a letter and we'll send it to him. No problem. Tim? Jason? David? Terrence?
No, I wasn't planning on being there, so.
You were?
You guys, this is the, the contract we need to sign and I think we're done. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All of them in favor? Again, and thank you again, Melissa, for your help earlier.